So, good evening. I'm calling the Southborough School Committee meeting into order for Wednesday, May 10, 2023. And first order of business is nominations of officers. And the first order of business is nomination for a chairperson for the school committee. So, I will turn it over to the committee for any nominations for chairperson.
I'd like to nominate Kamali Amili as chairperson.
Second.
Alright, so we have a nomination for Kamali and a second from Jen Primack. Any discussion?
I'm open to any questions.
Are you interested in doing?
I am interested in the opportunity.
Great.
Alright, seeing no discussion, roll public.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
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 (applause).
There it is.
Oh, there it is.
Now, we have nominations for vice chair and secretary.
Before we do the nominations, can I just say something? Alright, thank you.
You are the chair.
Thank you for feeling confident to bestow this opportunity on me. Last year, or for the previous school year, I've served as the vice chair. I've learned a lot. And prior to that, just as a committee member, I think that I'll be able to leverage all of that for this next role. And I will be leaning on everyone to support me in that. So, thank you. I just want to say thank you. I appreciate it. I understand that it's a level that is meant for someone in a leadership position, and I hope to do that for all of us, as well as for the community. Thank you. That's all I have to say about that.
Nominations for vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Jen Primack for vice chair.
Second.
Second.
And we all second that. I heard Chelsea second that. Any comments or discussion? Well, Jen, I'll just comment that I think that you'd be a great partner to have as a vice chair, so I hope that you will accept the nomination and will give this a go.
I do. I look forward to working with you.
Alright, so let's, should we take a vote? All in favor? Alright, okay. We'll be having a new vice chair. Next, we'll have nominations for secretary.
I'd like to nominate Chelsea Melonowski for secretary.
Second.
Chelsea, do you have any, is there any open discussion or questions?
I'm happy to do that if that's the will of the committee.
And any other comments? Alright, well, let's take a vote on that. All in favor? Alright, so we have unanimous. Chelsea, thank you for taking the opportunity.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Next on the agenda?
Is elections of superintendent to union number three members. So, we have, the chair is automatically a member of superintendency union number three, and it's been past practice that the two remaining long-standing committee members would serve on that union as well. So, the will of the committee would like to continue with that past practice.
Is there any objections to that? That would be yourself, Jen, Roger?
Can I ask a question? So, what, so I'm currently chair, right, for the superintendent evaluation? What, does that mean, when is the new, it's, do I stay chair?
You get to finish.
Okay.
And then, and then next year, Northborough will chair the superintendency union number three.
So, I don't get to pass the word off?
You could.
Yeah, I'm kidding. Okay. Thank you.
Roger?
So, I believe that the officers this next year will come from Northborough, right?
Correct.
So, effectively, we're just, you know, members.
Yeah. And Jack?
So, we just need a nomination for the two members, so.
Individually or together?
I think we do it together.
Okay. I'll just say, before we do that, see Chelsea, any questions on that?
No. That makes sense to me to have the longest-serving members do that.
Okay. So, let's take a vote. I would nominate Jen Primack and Roger Challen to be the, on the superintendency union number three members. All in favor of that?
Second.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then, now, let's take a vote. All in favor?
Yeah.
Unanimous. Thank you. Next on the agenda?
School choice public hearing.
We would, I would look to the floor for any open comment.
For the chair?
Yes.
Are there folks here for that public hearing tonight? I'm just curious.
Emma.
Fair point.
So, yeah, we have an opportunity to have a public hearing on school choice. If anybody wanted to speak to that?
So, I would just, in terms of formality, recommend that we open the public hearing for school choice. And there are two reasons, two public hearings in the course of a year that this school committee is required to have. One is the budget, and the second is school choice. So, the chair doesn't get to have too many public hearings, so this is one important one. But typically, we call the public hearing into session, ask for comments, and then we close. It just doesn't matter formality.
And we, so I will at 6:30, 8:00 PM, call the school choice public hearing into session. And seeing that we do not have any participants or comments, we will close that school choice public hearing at 6:30, 8:00 PM. So, now, we'll open the floor for any public comments, just on any topics. If there's anyone that has a public comment, just come to the, you can just stand where you are or come to the microphone. Okay. Well, seeing that we have no public comments, we'll move to new business. First on the agenda is, of course, we want to welcome our new Southborough School Committee members. I will open the floor for us to kind of, if anyone wants to say anything.
I'd just like to say, congratulations to both of them. I, I think that it's going to be a great committee, and, you know, again, I'd just like to say welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will just invite you to take the opportunity, when you get a chance, to get settled in, to ask us any questions that you may have. There's, in the first two months, you'll have a number of meetings, and so feel free to just ask questions. A lot of training to attend, and that will be helpful for you as well, in terms of our regulation, both state and locally. But yes, congratulations. Looking forward to serving through.
I would like to add my congratulations, and it was a contested race, and all three candidates were excellent. So, congratulations on the two of you, and I look forward to working with you both.
Thank you, Chair. And I'll just also congratulate the two of you. It was a contested race, and I think that it was very collegial and professional race, and I think all three of the candidates had skills and talents that they could add to the committee. I'm thrilled that the two of you were elected, and I believe that you have some skillsets that will add value to the work that we do as a school committee and as a district. And I always appreciative of people who are willing to volunteer their time and expertise, so thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
I'm very excited to join this committee. I have a lot of respect for how this committee operates, and I look forward to working with the administration and the faculty and staff at all the schools. And we wasted no time in diving right in today, so I'm excited to get up to speed, and I have a lot to learn. So, thank you for being so welcoming.
So, next on our agenda, is the principal's report. Is Mucci, it sounds like he'll be present?
Yes. I think it's just me today. Yep. Thank you. Welcome, Zee and Chelsea. Congratulations. She'll do a great job representing the students and community of Southborough, so welcome. I'll start with the FINN update. So, FINN is in the second week of kindergarten screening and parent orientation. FINN has had about 110 parents register their children for kindergarten for the 23-24 school year, and as of today, about 80 children were screened. Preschool staff worked with, yesterday, as part of our professional development day, and I'll highlight some of the other work around the other buildings, but at FINN with preschool, preschool staff worked with Emma Bartolini, a Southborough parent and licensed mindfulness instructor, in the morning on how to create a more mindful classroom environment and how to incorporate more mindfulness practices within the preschool daily schedule. Staff then worked with Jennifer Ostroff in the afternoon and focused on creating a trauma-sensitive environment and approach to instruction. FINN staff took part in several different professional development opportunities, and I'm going to highlight some of those that were also taking place at Woodward and the other schools. So, yesterday, during our district-wide professional development day at Woodward, Northborough-Southborough educators took part in the launch of Wit and Wisdom, the ELA curriculum led by Great Minds, which is a professional learning facilitator. Staff were introduced to the core concepts of the program, including the content stages of wonder, organize, reveal, the still, and know. Staff had the opportunity to explore resources and module lessons, and were provided insight from educators who had firsthand experience using the program. It was a great day, a great way to provide a consistent experience for all educators across our two towns and seven elementary schools. In addition, specialist staff across both towns took part in the QPR, which is Question, Persuade, and Refer, training led by Southborough Youth and Family Services. QPR is an emergency mental health intervention for suicidal persons. The training also helps to identify and interrupt the crisis and direct the person to the proper care they require. Also, Woodward, last week, we welcomed incoming grade two parents and families for the annual parent orientation. Our evening event provided families with an overview of what to expect as students transition from FINN to Woodward, including school logistics, communication, attendance, expectations, curriculum updates, and our student referral process. A special thank you to our Woodward staff who attended, including Kelly Kylie, Colleen Black, Jen Sarah, Lisa Goulet, Carrie Capel, Donna Bradley, and Jenny Bogart. Following the presentation, staff took parents and families on a tour of our beautiful building. At Neary School, Officer Jeff Norton began teaching the DARE this week, DARE program this week with our fifth graders. This week's lesson launched an eight-week training, which will culminate with a DARE graduation on June 20th. Officer Norton made a great connection with our students. We're also looking forward to the Southborough Police Department's lunch invasion on May 26th, where they will be serving lunch and going out to recess during both fourth and fifth grade lunch blocks. The winning artists of the YES, which is the youth expressions of Southborough art contest, have been selected by a team put together by our Neary art teacher, Denise Johnson, who led the initiative. The pieces of art will be displayed throughout Southborough for all to see. Congratulations to the following artists and where their pieces will be displayed, and a big thank you to Denise Johnson. So, I'm going to read the artists, the title of the piece, and then where it will be displayed. So, Joanna Alcott, "The Place of Dreams," Neary School. Heather Blor, "My Favorite Place," Southborough Library. Lily Bertinazzi, "Swans in Spring," Trotier Middle School. Lucy Gardner, "Morris Cafe," Moros Cafe. Maria Glazer, "The Swans," will be posted at the fire department. Mia Graziani, Woodward School 2023, and that'll be at Woodward. Bennett Green, Woodward in the Fall, that will also be posted at Woodward. Rashil Kumbakar, "I Love My Southborough," that'll be at the townhouse. Eli Martin, Grassy Hill, Youth and Family Services. Rushlana Matviva, Rainbow Library at the Southborough Library. Ravati Nath, Sunny Stroll, FINN School. Anya Ruschig and Serena Setti, "Love is Beautiful," that'll be at the police department. Charlie Sellers, Santa C, Southborough, at the senior center. And then, Mira Tiggi, Goose, and that's going to be at the central office. And now for Trotier's update. And congratulations to all those two artists, as well as Denise Johnson for running the program. The Trotier update? Trotier Drama Program hosted four shows of Meet the Creeps, which is a take on the Addams Family. Heather Morris and Christine Penzone, the advisors to the program, went out of their way to provide so many great opportunities for students. The show only calls for 15 student, student parts. As a result, the advisors doubled the cast, double-cast the show in order to maximize the opportunities for all students to become involved and perform. In the past week, they hosted two dress rehearsals with Neary and Woodward and held four more shows over the weekend for Southborough community. The last show was held on Sunday. This was quite an undertaking for our staff and students. And I can just give a plug, we were there. The entire Woodward school was there for a performance last Thursday, and it was wonderful to be at Trotier and for our students to see what it's like for their upperclassmen and their neighbors and family members and relatives to be performing. It was a great experience. Also at Trotier, Trotier is preparing for scheduling for the 23-24 academic year. In an effort to provide more options and opportunities for our students, the seventh grade team has included a series of elective courses. This year, we are offering newspaper, math games, true crime, and of course, social-emotional learning for those students who do not take band, chorus, orchestra, or art elective. These new offerings give our seventh graders more options. The goal of these electives is to have students take classes of interest and provide choice in their learning. It is a credit to the, to the team of teachers for developing these classes and building a more comprehensive academic program at Trotier. And that's all for the updates, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that I am able to.
Thank you for the update. I just want to comment on a couple of the things that you mentioned, the lunch invasion. I think that's a great idea for our circle servants to get involved with the students and not feel so, you know, repetitive. So, I think that's great, and just congratulations again to all of the young artists that submitted their work, and to the teacher that actually facilitated all of that. There's a lot of marketing and push to get everyone involved, so thank you for that. And I wanted, there was some anecdotal conversation about the plays at Trotier, that this was well-attended, and maybe one of the more well-attended because there were so many different sessions. Do you know if that is the case?
Do you mean for the community performances?
Yeah.
I can't speak to that, but I can tell you that we, the entire Woodward school was there, and I believe some of the Neary fourth grade classes were there, and the auditorium felt packed, and students had a great chance to perform for their, like I said, classmates, but also younger siblings and, and community members and peers and kids that they ride the bus with, all these, you know, these connections that students have, they were able to see their upperclassmen kind of performing for them. I thought it was a great experience. And a great, a great performance.
Yeah.
The student actors did a fantastic job. And if I could just speak to the, the lunch invasion, so Officer Norton is spearheading that, and he has made, also scheduled dates to visit the other schools as well. And I would say that that might be one of the first times I met Chelsea, when she came down and was part of a lunch takeover a few years ago. So, it is a great experience, and we certainly welcome that connection.
So, I have a few questions. Are we, is, how are we, I guess, promoting or talking to community about, about the artists? Because it's great for the community to know about that and to be able to see the artwork. So, I guess that's my first question, and then I have another question.
So, the, the artwork was photographed and is going to be displayed through a slideshow that's shared with the community. I do believe there's also a presentation. I can, while we're talking, I can just look up the flyer date and get that information to you. And then, the artwork would be obviously posted around the, around the town, so if you do have natural business, you know, going into a building, I would just, you know, recommend that you ask where the artwork is hung, and then you could see it firsthand. But I could follow up with just the ceremony and, and how that project culminated. But I do know that it was photographed, and it was going to be put together so that all families could view it without having to go to each site.
Yeah, and I just ask because it's such a neat thing for our community to be aware of how to, where they're all located and how to go see them.
So, we did receive an email today with a slideshow to include in our weekly communications coming up, so I think the intention of principals is to add that to their, their weekly updates this week, and I plan to highlight the superintendent's update to the larger community.
And Tuesday, May 3rd, is at 4 o'clock at the Neary School. That will be the, looks like the, the presentation, but as Superintendent Marneau mentioned, we were all sent the slideshow, and my thought was to have that part of our parents' square updates.
And the other question I have is just a small question. Is the, the training professional day around the curriculum, is that the curriculum that we've received the grant funding for, and it went well, it sounds like, on training?
Yes, I can only speak to the Woodward training, but all the facilitators that I, or principals I've spoken to, the facilitators did a fantastic job. Ours was China Crawford, and she was a teacher in Baltimore City. She came and was able to, as a facilitator for Great Minds, but was able to speak to the program because she's used it for the past three or four years in her middle school class. She was incredibly knowledgeable, and I would say, you know, assistants superintendent, Reinhorn can also speak to it. Our connection with the folks at Wit and Wisdom and Great Minds has been nothing but positive so far.
I would agree, and we're going to hear more about it when our coordinators do some more, a presentation a little bit later, so.
It seems to be a well-organized program with a ton of great resources, and we've been lucky to get those.
Thank you.
There's still a lot to learn. You know, I'm certainly not an expert, even though I was part of the group that looked at all of the different programs. I am by no means an expert and know that we're going to do a lot of learning together next year.
Can I, can I ask you a question? Yeah, I'm just curious about the programs you mentioned at Trotier in the end, you know, those for additional learning. So, are those new programs, or, you know, have they have been there for years? Just curious.
I believe the elective, the breadth of the electives is new to Trotier. It's, I, I can't speak to, to the specifics of the scheduling, but maybe Mr. Lavoy, who has had experience at Trotier, might be able to.
Might be able to.
Yeah.
Middle school is scary to me. So, the elective program was an eighth-grade-only program that's been, oh gosh, I'd say probably 15-plus years or so. And so, for those students that didn't take band, chorus, orchestra, or art elective, they had the opportunity to take a variety of different electives for different semesters. So, that was done through a process, and it got up to like 20 offerings at one point. I think the goal is now to bring some of that flexibility to the schedule to the seventh grade. So, I don't believe the offerings are going to be as robust as they are for the eighth grade, but this is the start of that, with the hope of the same purpose, to make sure that, you know, students are engaged in a variety of enrichment opportunities and opportunity for SEL work and things of that nature. So, I don't know much about the details, but the format is very familiar. So, that's what I think they're trying to achieve.
What I've heard from Mr. Hershak is that it's driven by student choice, which, you know, then leads to just greater engagement, you know, for students, so I think that is a huge point.
Which was always the goal of the eighth-grade plan as well, so I think it's just a derivative of that.
My anecdotal evidence for my daughter, her friend, so she's going into seventh grade, she was very, very excited about the, the different opportunities and the wealth of like, you know, the breadth of what was being offered. So, and I think it's really nice that there's a lot of like SEL programming to help, so it fits in nicely with what that child, so she's very excited, her friends are very excited, in my small anecdotal sample.
So, going through that process with my own son, who's going to be in middle school next year, very scary, but it's a similar offering, and I just think that, you know, he was invested in the course selection because he has so much choice with him.
And Zee, just to give you some more, like, specifics around what types, like, what's the range? Imagine your seventh grader taking a class in financial literacy, like, that's what we've all been talking about, we want that, that's, they have the option to do that. But if, there's also, if your child is more adept with just kind of engaging with a peer that, you know, is, is, needs a, needs a, needs a friend to kind of work with them, like, kind of like that buddy system, they can do that as part of their elective. So, it ranges from the very, or if you're more a hands-on learner, if you want to build something, there's a class, an elective where they could do that, you know? And so, I thought that, that breadth, like, it's really, really good. Not just, you know, it passes to just math, English, science, it's beyond that.
Great to hear. Emma will be excited. It's curious, I'm sure this has been, you know, discussed way before, but, you know, when you expand the program like this to seventh grade, how, how do they get funded for a program?
I'm not aware. I wouldn't be a good person to answer.
I think it's through, through scheduling.
Yes.
Through use of current resources in a different way.
Exactly.
So, we had the elective program in eighth grade, and I think Principal Hershak has looked at how we use those resources to expand to seventh grade without an additional cost to the overall operational budget.
See.
I think it also speaks to like the, the great skillset we have in our current teachers, that they can flex between the core course that they teach, as well as also in period three and four, teaching something that's their, you know, a different part of their passion or skillset. So, we're really grateful for that. And the principals, I believe, are teaching some classes too, so, which is why Mr. Mucci stays.
I would also, as you have attention, you're in slash shop class, sign me up.
Anything else? Okay, so we'll move on to the next part of our agenda, which is the legislative update.
Sure. So, Kate Donahue, State Representative Kate Donahue, did send out quite a lengthy, detailed email to the school committee about some of the initiatives in the House budget. It's now probably old news in the sense that the Senate has released its budget. I think some of the highlights that we're looking for in the budgets really are around universal free meals. There was, that was in the House budget. It was not in the Senate budget, however, there's a different funding mechanism that Governor Haley is looking at to make sure that happens. In the House budget, they also had 100% transportation reimbursement for regional school districts, although it doesn't directly impact the public schools at Southborough. There is a trickle-down effect in terms of cost savings as a result of economy of scale because of the region. The Senate budget has the reimbursement rate at 90%, so that's a 10% decrease, so we'll continue to advocate for our 100% reimbursement rate in terms of regional transportation. In terms of a minimum local state aid per child, it is $60 in the House budget and the Senate budget, so we'll continue to advocate for more, but that is an increase from the governor's budget of about $30 per student. And then, the last area that we're keeping an eye on is the increased cap of the MSBA program from 800 million to 1, 1.1 billion. So, that allows for more accelerated repair projects, school building projects to be funded across the Commonwealth, which ultimately will benefit Southborough. So, Becky is watching the budget process very closely. The next step is for the budgets to go to conference committee and hopefully have a budget to be presented to the governor for approval. Though we are keeping an eye because it does have any impact on the town finances and also at the regional level.
And Greg, in her note, she said that they're going to go to the Senate now, this, by the end of this month?
Correct. So, they released the Senate budget this week?
Yes.
And now, there's, they are, the Senate is the game?
Okay.
So, that is hot off the list.
Okay. Any questions?
So, through the chair, so, just, I mean, I'm, I mean, as one committee member, I'm a little disappointed. I mean, I guess, I'm not sure what we could have expected. On the one hand, $30 a student is $30 a student. On the other hand, what does that mean, how much does that really mean in total? Is it?
It's about $30,000 to $40,000.
Right, total, you know, so it doesn't make a very large dent in, in our budget. But hey, you know, it's, maybe it's a step in the right direction, but, and I know the state's got, you know, its, its own challenges, but we should have been more.
Can I ask?
Yes, go ahead, Jen.
Is the transportation budget then better than usual? I remember that the reimbursement rate was not that high.
It's ranged from 75%.
Right.
All the way to 95%. I think it's ranged over the past 10 years, and it's been very variable. This is the first time that it has been budgeted at 100%, which was the commitment the state made to regional school districts. So, we were pleased to see that commitment, but again, the Senate budget is at 90% reimbursement, so we'll have to wait to see where it goes.
Thank you. Okay. And? Anything else in the legislative update?
No, just add on to Roger's comment that from the state's perspective, the community of Southboro is considered wealthy. And it does consider the wealth factor of the community. And the Student Opportunity Act really looks to level the playing field in terms of investment in communities that haven't, that aren't as wealthy, that haven't made the same investment as Southboro has made over the past, you know, ten to fifteen years. So I don't think we anticipated a large increase of state aid as a result of the governor's budget. So it is where we thought we would be. However, there's still needs in our community and any additional funding to help us grow our programs and support education is important.
Can I just ask one question?
Yes.
Thank you. There's nothing in there, though, that we didn't get that would impact any FY24 projections in terms of budget, right?
No, correct.
So we're not at risk for having to cut anything out?
No, all of our projections were below what the Senate and the House budget are.
Okay.
So actually the, the community should see additional funding in aggregate.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Roger.
But just to ask the superintendent to maybe comment on this. The fact that a community, whoever it might be, is considered wealthy or not, isn't necessarily, doesn't necessarily align with how much communities invest in their education. So you can have a wealthy community that, you know, doesn't invest in their education. And what happens, and then you have communities that aren't wealthy that also struggle to do that. But what happens is, this is, it's kind of skewed so that communities that haven't invested in education for their, for their children kind of ride a little bit on the backs, I'm trying to think of a better term, of those that have, the way the formula works. So I don't know if you have any questions for, about that, I'm sure Greg will explain it, but, you know, it's, it's always a challenge if you've done a good job of investing in, in your schools.
Yeah, we know it's a nuanced situation and there's a lot of like historical factors and, and, you know, that, that, we are just kind of like the recipients of where we're sitting right now. So I, I'll, I'll leave it at that. We, we know that we will all want to do better for the kids, right? No matter what socioeconomic classification they're in. So let's move on to item number four under new business, which is the school choice vote.
Sure, so I'll provide a little bit of context for school choice, with the understanding that we have two new members who may not be up to speed on school choice in the program. So I will give you the two-minute overview. So school choice allows a parent or guardian to enroll his or her child in a school district other than the district in which they, they reside. Under the school choice law, all school districts in Massachusetts are presumed to be choice districts unless a district has a public hearing and withdraws from school choice. So it's, it's again, up to each district on an annual basis to take no action and be a school choice district or hold a public hearing and withdraw. It's been the past practice of the Southboro School District to withdraw from school choice for a variety of number of factors that I don't think have changed over the past many years. In terms of school choice, when, when a district accepts a school choice student, the reimbursement rate for that student is five thousand dollars. As a comparison, the per pupil expenditure for educating Southboro, a student is twenty thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-one cents in two thousand and twenty-one. So there is about a fifteen thousand dollar difference in what it actually costs to what we receive reimbursement from this student. In terms of school choice, districts can choose what grade level, how many students. If there is low enrollment in a particular grade level, the school committee can decide. They can open up ten school choice seats in first grade only, so there's a lot of flexibility. However, once we open up school choice and accept students, the students that we do accept have a right to remain in our educational system through eighth grade. So it is a commitment. And then just, just finally, you know, I think the advantages of school choice, it does generate revenue. It does have, for some communities who are struggling financially, provide an opportunity to accept students and take that additional revenue that they typically would not receive. It also allows for communities where they're seeing declining enrollment to be able to increase enrollment. And an advantage, it is a year-year decision of the school committee, so every year, this will be a decision the school committee will make. The disadvantage is, is the five thousand dollars compared to the actual per pupil expenditure cost of educating a Southboro student is significantly different, there's a discrepancy. Acceptance is by lottery, so you could have a student who requires a lot of additional support coming from another community. And once the student is enrolled in school choice and our district, our responsibility as a community is to that child and meeting the needs, so it could cost far greater than the five thousand dollars we would receive. And I think for those two primary, primary reasons, my recommendation is to, for the committee to withdraw from school choice for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And then lastly, I'll just share that our enrollment numbers are, are healthy, our class sizes are healthy. When we look at class sizes coming out of the pandemic, I think it's important to maintain low class sizes so that we can meet the needs of our students. And at this point, if we, if we did accept school choice students, it would only increase class sizes at this point.
Thank you, that was good overview. That was a lot, even, you know, even though it was a short time, do you have any questions about that? I know I certainly did a few years back, so.
I have too.
Okay.
Who pays for the transportation for their students, school choicing?
The, the sending district.
Okay, and?
And the parents, so we have the obligation for.
Okay, so it's purely the educational proportion. And with, with the lottery, do you enter a lottery for a specific town? Or do you enter a lottery and you could get sent anywhere? Do you know?
No, so you enter first, we would, the lottery would be for Southboro.
Okay.
So families interested in school choice and to Southboro would be placed on a waiting list. And then if there were more, more students than seats, then we would draw names out of that.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, but then to answer that, so the, the students can arrive from any town?
Right, right, I just didn't know if you enter a lottery to school choice out to anywhere, if you're directed, you can direct it to a specific town.
To a specific town.
I think with, you know, looking further in the packet, with the kind of fluctuation in teachers that we're dealing with, kind of because of the enrollment in every grade and moving teachers around, I think, you know, if we can, as much as we can stabilize what we have makes sense to me. So I would agree with your recommendation.
Roger?
You know, I thought I knew the answer to this, but I'm, I'm not sure I do. I'm just following Chelsea's comment about transportation. I mean, I'm a, you know, I think people know me, I try to support special education wherever I can. And so if, if a child came from another district to this district and this district was not able to, and the child had special needs, and this district was not able to provide in-district support, so the, the student would have to go out of district. Who pays the out-of-district transportation in that instance?
So the, the five thousand dollars is for a non-special ed student.
Okay.
For a student who requires special education services, the reimbursement rate is seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Twenty-five hundred dollars more?
Correct, if a student requires an out-of-district placement, that is considered a change of placement and the sending district is required to pay for that placement. So we're not, we are not responsible for an out-of-district placement, so there's, there's not a risk in that area.
And there wouldn't really be a lot of benefit for a family that was in that situation to go through that. You know, I, I thought that was the case, but I wasn't sure, that's why I asked. Thank you.
Any other questions, Congress? So we have talked about having this on the agenda for, I think, the last two sessions. We wanted to ensure that we had, the decisions we're making for the upcoming year were inclusive of the newest committee members as you would be representative of the community for the upcoming year. So I think that if there's no objections, I would accept the motion that we, to pick a vote, or that we move this. So, excuse me, that being said, I would accept a motion for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year that the public schools of Southboro withdraw from school choice.
Second. Well, I, well, I guess I should do a so moved, right? Because you were looking to accept the motion, so I'm sorry. I'll so moved.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'll second.
So moved by Roger, second by Jen. Thank you. Let's do a call vote. I'll start from the left.
Uh, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 So moved, thank you. And again, with this, we get to review this each year and make a decision each year, so.
Next on the agenda, we have an update on the, from the ELA and math, or a presentation from ELA and math.
So just briefly make some general comments and then turn it over to Dr. Reinhorn. So a tremendous amount of work has been, has been put into really looking at our ELA and math curriculum, pre-K through eight. I'm sure many of you have read articles around the science of reading and really making sure districts are aligned to the science of reading. And we're very fortunate to have Dr. Reinhorn and our teaching and learning team moving this work forward in our district. So this evening, it's really kind of a, an update on the work that's been accomplished and there's a lot to celebrate. So for that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Reinhorn.
Thank you. So I am really pleased tonight, but in general, to get to work with Megan Kelty, Kathy Lasat, and Mary Coakley. So Megan is our ELA coordinator, Kathy and Mary are math coordinators and bring their expertise, their positive energy and their leadership to this work. So I will start us off and then they're going to each sort of take a turn. We're not comprehensively talking about everything that we're doing in math and ELA, but really trying to highlight some of the biggest focus areas this year and heading into next year. So, so just to start us off, and, and I apologize that this first slide is slightly different than the packet. I know I shouldn't do that, but I have this problem of like constantly changing the slides. So just the first one, everything else is the same. So when I think about how we do this work, we really do have, you know, several different elements that guide our work and are kind of our north stars. So our core values, our vision, our profile of graduate, our, so that's our student side, right? Our vision is what we're aiming for in our students, our high-quality instructional practices is our teacher side. So what do we understand to be the ways that we are going to accomplish our vision? And we have our strategic plan. And I'm really highlighting two of our strategic objectives around empowering learners and equity of opportunity. So we're, in all of this work, really aiming toward our vision, staying true to our core values and keeping a lens of equity through everything that we do and kind of the integration of all of these things. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kathy, who's going to start us off talking about math.
Thank you. So just to kind of lay the groundwork again about math, if, keeping in mind what our vision is for A Portrait of a Graduate, we have to understand that math instruction and learning has really changed over the past few decades from this idea of a procedural understanding for students, like many of us learned in this room, just for the most part, how to do mathematics, not always understanding that, you know, the deeper why we're doing certain things. So that's really been a shift from this procedural understanding to a more balanced approach, which includes conceptual understanding, procedural understanding, and problem solving. So with that shift, we turn to what are the most high-leverage teaching practices in order to guide our teaching instruction? And in 2014, the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics published a book called Principles to Action and they really highlight these high-leverage moves for teachers. And it includes things like implementing tasks that promote reasoning and problem solving, using, connecting mathematical representations, having mathematical discourse, which really, again, goes back to thinking about our portrait of a graduate and our communicators and our problem solvers. There is procedural fluency still built in there, but it's, you know, comes with conceptual understanding. So now we not only know how to do the mathematics, but we know why we're doing it. And then there's things like productive struggle, like it is okay to struggle in mathematics as long as it's productive, as long as it's moving us forward. And then lastly, we're really using, our shift in instruction has come from using the thinking that students bring to the classroom and their ideas about mathematics and using that to guide our instruction. So with that, we've had to change our lesson structure from what was traditionally known as an I do, we do, you do. So I do would be the teacher stands at the board, models how to do something, students practice as a class, very similar problems on how to, you know, similar concept, and then they do some independent practice on their own. We've shifted now to something where we reversed it, it's now a you do, we do, I do. So here, the students are starting off engaging together collectively on those tasks that promote reasoning and problem solving. And the teacher really is guiding the student discussion and the conversation and allowing students to make the connections between their entrance into a problem and then the mathematical concept that they're learning. And then the I do really is at the end, really, the teacher facilitating, you know, the conversation around what was the ultimate mathematical goal of that lesson and kind of, you know, bringing it full circle for the students from where they were to where they were headed. So with that, keeping in mind those things, our highlights at the elementary level are, we're continuing to use Envisions. We updated our program to the 2020 version in the school year 2021. So we're continuing to use that and it meets, it's a high-quality instructional material and they really highlight those key practices that I just talked about throughout their, you know, instruction guides. But something new this year was we piloted a digital learning tool called ST Math. That is, stands for Spatial Temporal Mathematics. It's a real, it's a supplemental program to Envision, so we use it together. It's really deepening the conceptual understanding of students and focusing on their ability to reason and problem solve. So unlike other digital learning tools, which typically have the students doing math and it might then involve a game, you know, it's really fun and engaging for the students, what ST Math has done different than any other program out there at the moment is they've made the math the gamification. So the students, by playing the game, are learning the mathematics. And it's taken out any directions or any words for the students, so, and we'll, we'll give you a glimpse of what that looks like. And it's really based on neurosilence and how students learn mathematics. And so we'll talk about two things called the perception action cycle and then how they work a student from a visual to a symbolic understanding. And then later, or now, however, we'll discuss a grant that we have received in order to maintain this ST Math digital platform for the next three years.
Do you want to introduce Gigi?
Yes, and there is Emma.
Emma, probably.
Do you recognize, do you know who that is? It's Gigi, Gigi is our penguin. So the ultimate goal of ST Math is to get Gigi either across the screen or up the screen. And when you don't get Gigi across, there's some feedback for you in how to get Gigi across. So Gigi is our, our penguin here. So the perception action cycle is, again, based in neuroscience, it's when students notice and wonder, so they're looking at the screen, if you can see like on the left-hand side, students just see this image. Students just see this image and they don't know what to do yet. There's no direction. So they have to, kind of, what do they notice? What do they wonder about it? They have to predict what they think they should do and they have to try something out. So they test something. So for example, in the middle, they tested something out. I intentionally made a mistake on this one, so we can see a really important component of this. They test what they do and then they observe what happens and from there, they get immediate feedback. So here, as you can probably assume that you can notice, oh, this ostrich has some legs and there's some shoes. And the idea is that the ostrich will have a shoe for each leg. If I make a mistake though, so in this example, I chose five, the, this program automatically shows you where your error is. You can see that, oh, we matched four of the shoes with the legs, but there's still this one shoe. So if you continued on with the animation, Gigi wouldn't be able to get across. Gigi would bump and Gigi would go back and you'd have to try again. So, um, so that's kind of the perception cycle that it goes through. And then it works through visuals to symbolic. So that first one was, it's all visual. So students just see images and they're working through that cycle. But as they move through the puzzles, it starts to become symbolic. So it, it will eventually move, as you can see through the slides, it will replace certain parts of the visual with numbers or with operations until ultimately, like, for example, this is like a fifth grade standard of order of operations. So even though it started very visual, something that even a kindergartner could do, they could count those legs very simply, it ends up with the symbolic understanding of order of operations. So we're super excited to have this. I think the kids love Gigi. A lot of them love Gigi. Looking to Emma for some feedback for that. Bye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy, can you ask one question around how does one, are students all in the same space?
Nope. So it's, it's really, so every, we try to have every student be on their grade-level journey, but every student works at their own pace and their own level. So some students will work through puzzles far faster than other students. You know, and it works through as much as you need. Like some students are staying in that visual, like, area longer before they get to the symbolic, but it's a mastery-based program, so they only move on once they master a concept. Some students finish their grade-level journey and there's challenge puzzles and things that, you know, for their extension. And then even maybe even beginning the next year's journey, you know, before they end. But it's very individual, so very paced toward what the students need.
Jen, how's your work?
So what's the teacher's role in, in all of this and teaching the material if they're doing a lot? I don't know. I assume this is not all of what they're doing in the class.
Yeah, sure.
How do the teachers interact with all of this in teaching the material?
Yeah, that's a great question. So it's a little bit of a shift in the beginning because it's one of these times where the teachers, they don't know every puzzle and they don't know what to do. So part of it is modeling that thought process with children. Like what do we notice? What do we wonder? What do you think happens here? What happens when we do this? But then the teacher also has the ability. Stephanie, do you mind going back to the other screen? You can't, it's very, it's a very subtle notice, but if you look at the third screen, do you notice how the top blue bar, it now changed from the student's name to, that's actually a scribble bar? So the teacher has the ability to pause the animation with the, or the student has the ability if they, if they know how to do it. They can pause the animation and you can scribble back and forth. So the teacher or the, you know, assistant in the room, or the student themselves, another peer, could sit down and pause that animation and say, okay, what, again, what do we notice? What do we wonder? What happened? How does this connect to, you know, how does this information that I'm giving connect to what I need to do? So there's, there's the teacher's ability to assist the children that way. But there's also, we can go more into the program. You can assign certain, let's say I'm teaching a specific topic on fractions. I can assign to all of my students the fractions objectives that match, so it can align to what you're teaching. And we're not there yet, but over the course of the next three years as we're using this, we're hoping to integrate this more where you can do what they call number puzzles. So it's using these games as a whole number talk. So being able to, you know, project the game and, and work through that process so that it connects to what you're teaching that day. So, go ahead.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Of course.
How has that process been for the training of teachers? So if you're very, if you're used to teaching this one way where you're instruct standing at the, I mean, that was a while ago, but you're standing at the board and, and then that paradigm shift of really putting that more onto the child to figure out and be, has that been a challenge with some of the teachers or how, how's that process going in training?
We have an incredible staff. So first of all, I don't think, I would be hard-pressed that you walked into any elementary school in Southborough and see that directive teaching. Maybe at times you might, right? Because there, sometimes there is a need for a direct instruction like that. But I think with the program Envisions itself, we've already been working, I mean, we've had this program now for probably nine or 10 years. And so that, those conversations have already been taken. We're just reinforcing, you know, thinking about what are those deep tasks we can use? So this was a shift at first because it was, the shift being that there's no directions and no words, right? So there was a little bit of that uncomfortableness, but, and David, you can jump in if you don't mind me putting you on the spot a little bit. I think once teachers got using it in the classroom and actually seeing that, you know what? The kids can do this, right? They, they step up and they can do this. Maybe that took a little bit of the pressure off.
And I would just add that, and I'll give Dave some time to think in case he wants to say something like, but we had professional development.
Yes.
And so part of the professional development was the coaching on how you support productive struggle. And, you know, there was this fundamental question of, well, how do I coach them if I don't even know what the next screen is? And because it is adaptive, like it's going to respond to how the student does, the next screen's not the same for everyone. So it's not even necessarily that like, oh, I just did this puzzle with this student. I know what's about to pop up. Like, well, it depends how they do with what is right in front of them. So that's what the PD was about and are the ongoing conversations in PLC meetings and when Kathy's working with teams and with teachers.
You know, currently, like, we're doing a book study at Neri on, on productive struggles. So we have those conversations in the meetings, you know, what does it look like? And what do you do when a child is struggling and how do you support the child? And how do you create a classroom environment in which struggling is accepted? And it's actually part of the learning process. It's not something to, to, you know, be viewed as a negative within the classroom.
And then I have final, can I ask the final, or does someone else want to go on?
You're on the roll. Keep going.
Sorry, I just find this really interesting. And I have a daughter who's like in math now and it's been, so my question is like, how can we, I guess, also educate parents about this? Because one of the things that my daughter has, I wouldn't say complained about, but brought up is like, I have a question and there's, you know, unlike the last class where we went through it together, I'm kind of left, that's her perception. And then as parents were like, well, we were taught this way. So I'm wondering if there's some way to share this, because I think this is great. And I will say that like, I didn't really understand or love math until graduate school. I'm a psychologist and do research, until the teacher taught in a theoretical way, a similar way that you're describing here. And so I think it's a great way, but how do we educate parents on how to understand what's happening and when their kids bring concern, how to help them, I guess, in a similar way that fits this model?
And I think we're constantly having those conversations at a district level and a school level. Like I know Steve, you and I a number of times have done like, you know, math presentations at the parent coffees, you know, and trying to just, as much as we can, you know, have a voice to parents in order, you know, to talk about those things. There's definitely, there was a lot of question of like, can kids do ST Math at home and should they do? And we're like, well, it has to come with a parent component if it does. Because that could be very daunting for some people to see a program like this at home. And, you know, your child says, I have to do X amount for homework and here I am on this puzzle and now I'm a parent that doesn't see directions, you know? It would definitely have to come with some parent education around that, too.
If I could just speak, so we had a principal coffee earlier this year where we introduced ST Math to the Woodward community. And parents loved to see it. They wanted it for homework and we were concerned that, that it would become the parent's homework instead of the child's homework and take away that productive struggle. So with the One Eight Foundation, we met with some other grant recipients and other schools who are already using ST Math. And we got some great feedback, or given some great feedback from those schools and in different ways that you can engage the parent community, but not really through homework, not with ST Math at least.
That's it. That was great.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Roger and then Chelsea and then Zee.
Okay.
Um, you had, so I actually majored in math, but never understood it.
You're not alone. Let's keep it simple.
I mean, I guess I could do it, but, you know. So you said, I think, that a student can struggle, but as long as, I think, is the way you put it, but as long as a student's making progress, that that's, that's okay. And students progress at their own pace. Are there situations where progressing at a student's own pace is concerning? As opposed to just letting the student continue, there's any kind of, I guess, other kind of support that comes along, you know, or, or does this really just kind of work?
In terms of, I use, asking specifically about ST Math?
Yes.
Yes. So some of the supports might be, if a student is struggling, the teacher has the ability to see how often a student has tried a certain level or an objective. And what's recommended is if a student can't get beyond that, right? So now they're probably at a point of unproductive struggle, right? And that number's different per student. Some students will, at 10 tries, want to close the computer and be done and they've, they've reached that point and it's no longer productive. Other students will go 40 times and keep, you know, and keep plugging away at it. So it's really the teacher knowing, you know, what the student can handle. Once they get to that point though, the teacher has the ability to assign, let's say, example, go back to fractions. I'm in a fraction unit in fourth grade. My student is struggling. It's no longer productive. I'm going to go back to the third grade objective that aligns with fractions. I can give them some of those puzzles with the idea that they're going to work through the mastery of previous level content and then hopes to try again, you know, to continue on with that fourth grade.
Exactly what I was looking for. I mean, I think that, you know, the unproductive struggle situation as opposed to just, they're just there, okay? And the faculty's looking for this and...
Yes.
I think to the neuroscience and the learning theory behind this, it's also developmental. So students who are not ready to move from concrete to abstract, it's not going to move them to abstract problem solving when, when they haven't demonstrated that they're ready for that. So some of this is built into the design of the program, which is very helpful for us as well.
Interesting. Very interesting.
And Chelsea?
Great, thank you. I was also a math major, so. So I appreciate this presentation very much. It's very different than what I went to school for. But, um, so to piggyback off of what, where Roger was going, how does the teacher know when a child is hitting that unproductive point? And when is it, how do they know to intervene or to go back and reset what they're trying to do?
So probably two ways. One is just the observation, right? So sometimes kids just are very, like, letting us know that they are done, right? There's some, some obvious cues within the classroom, their behavior or whatnot. The other is they have a teacher dashboard that has all the students' names and you can see those tries that they've had. So they know, let's say, for example, they put kids on for 15 minutes. Maybe they were working with some students and others were still working, but they can look at the end of the day and say, you know what, tomorrow I need to check in with this student. They're at 40 tries, you know, so I, I need to start with that student tomorrow to make sure that, you know, is it productive or are they frustrated and then can we, you know, what do I need to do to, to help them there? So they do have that ability to see it.
And do they do ST Math every day?
So the recommendation is 16 minutes a week for K and one and 90 minutes a week for grades two to five. In our first year, our expectation was to teachers, to get, to get students on consistently. And that, that was, we were not going to hold the 60 or 90 minutes over their head and, and mandate it because it wasn't necessarily built into schedules, a dedicated time. So with that said, they, it varies probably school by school and teacher by teacher this year. But for the most part, their students are getting on consistently every week. And then next year, we know, you know, knowing that we have this now, to put it, principals are working with their staff to now build time into schedules. And that could be any time in the day. It's what works for that school and that, that grade level in particular. So it might be built into, you know, a math class within that 75-minute time. It might be first thing in the morning, you know, it really depends. Because our ultimate goal is that all students have access to it and making sure that we can get all students on.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Zee.
Yeah, my question is, in Southborough, the students have a Chromebook, right? They, they keep at school. So is the expectation that they only do this in school using that Chromebook? Or they can, they also have the option to do this at home on, on their home computer?
So right now, it's, right now, the expectation is simply that they'll do it at school using either their iPad or their Chromebook, depending on what grade level they're at. There is the ability to use it at home. They can access it through Clever, which they can get through any of the school's websites. So they have the ability to access it at home. Again, our conversations as teachers this first year was we wanted to make sure our teachers felt confident with the program and using it first before we expanded it to home use. And even next year, we're still a little hesitant to, to send it home. We're still working through some, you know, making sure we can build it, the time into our schedules and then look at data to see, do we even need it to be sent home? And then if we do, then we'll make sure that we have parent forms and things to, so parents feel comfortable having, you know, quite a different program to use at home, so.
Right. I see. Thanks. Yeah, and then this is, you know, my, my own experience, right? So it's more like a comment. So I actually learned about ST Math from, from Emma that, you know, Southborough is going to get ST Math, right? She, her second grade was in Shrewsbury because they were doing ST Math already.
Yes.
They had the, the iPad thing at that time, which they, they brought home. So, and she, she did that a lot, you know, at home, using, just working on ST Math, right? So, so I, I, you know, just from my own experience, I already got used to it. So I, I like all these things that you just presented. So I'm totally in, in it. And, no, I think it's, the, the program is, is really well-designed, right? And to the minimum, it provides a teaching material that already that the teacher can use. And also a substitute in, in Shrewsbury. So my experience was exactly like you said. Now, the students will work on those problems and then I got called to help them with, with that screen that they were on. And every student was, you know, on a different thing. So, but then the material is already created for the teacher. So that has made it a lot easier for, for the teacher. And, you know, it's more, almost like an assistant, right? Assistant to the teacher, but, you know, on a computer.
It just creates an opportunity that it's hard to replicate. Like, you know, to replicate those visuals and that experience for the students. It's not, other math programs that we have used in the past or tried in the past, it, sometimes a worksheet can replicate ultimately what they're doing on the computer. This is, this is different and, and that's hard for a teacher to replicate. And, and to say that, I think the other important thing to remember is you're teaching math content, obviously. That's one of the most important things. But you're also teaching students, you know, some of those more important skills of the standards of math practice, which are, you know, how do you understand, you know, and know what a problem is asking you? How do you persevere through things? How do you make connections among things? So you're working on more than just math content when you're doing a program like this. It's also about mathematical thinking and, and how to, you know, incorporate that in there as well.
Yep. And another thing is, I don't know if that's the plan for Southborough. Like, does this provide an option for the more advanced kids to, you know, to work on more things as they go? So they don't have to wait for, you know, what the teacher tells them to watch?
Yeah, so there's, once a student finishes their grade-level journey, at, currently, there is what they call extension puzzles. So they have these bonus puzzles at the end and there's a number of them. And then there's also a new program, a feature coming out. I don't know that I can speak to it as fully, but there's an enhancement to that. So once a student finishes their grade level, they still have more things to work on.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. I really like that feature. I think that's, you know, another value for, for this program. Because that, that's kind of a built-in, you know, extension program for the more advanced kids.
And it all looks the same. So students have all their computers out and everyone's using it and everyone has Gigi on their screen. And it all, you know, again, it's very scientific about why they're choosing what they're doing. But we're, we might be on different puzzles, but we, no one knows what level they're on. You know, they're on their own personal level and that's what, that's what's most important.
Thank you so much for all the information tonight. I think now that the school year is coming to a close, there's going to be the opportunity where you have students get to come and visit their schools, right? You get to come visit Finn, Woodward, and Tradiar. Maybe this would be something that, you know, is, you have a one-pager that says, you want to know what traditional versus contemporary, you know?
Great idea.
Do you know what productive learning, yeah, struggle is? You know, come talk to us at this table, this booth. Or just every math teacher uses two minutes out of their, you know, five-minute pitch to talk about that.
I even like the idea of transitioning, Gigi's at every building. So, you know what I mean? Remember Gigi? Remember Gigi at Finn? Gigi's also at Woodward and Gigi's also at Neri, so there'd be some comfort in that, too. Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
You can catch so many people in those opportunities. Okay.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
That was just elementary.
But I was, I was going to say that that idea of like, providing teachers with some of these slides is one of the things in the middle school level we've also been working on, so.
And a lot of the themes that you heard Kathy mention are clearly going to be in some of the slides that I'm sharing. I think last spring I came and, and gave an update. Well, we talked a little bit about trying to look for resources to support our students and teachers. And I'm happy to say we have chosen a resource. And I, I went back and forth as to... And I, I went back and forth as to which order this should be in, because we've chosen it, but we want to look back and explain the process. So in the fall of twenty-one, and yes, sometimes it does take a while to really dive in to all of the programs and, and really do a thorough search for what we would like to move toward. And so we started in the fall of twenty-twenty-one, and we gathered a team of teachers together and looked at what we were currently doing, and then where we wanted to head. And so the winter of twenty-one, twenty-two, we began really digging into what we wanted from a, a program, what the high-quality resources were, what other people were using. You'll see in the spring of twenty-twenty-two, we wanted to learn more about a, a more pared-down group of, of resources, and then we did a pilot this fall and this winter. And, and as you, as you'll notice here, this dives a little bit deeper into what the Carnegie Math Solution Resource is all about. So they too have guiding principles, all students are capable learners, perspective matters, learning by doing, production matters, learning through assessment, knowledge emerges over time, and education is a human endeavor, and collaboration is key. So these are really the tenets of what we were looking for when we were looking at the different resources. And you'll notice in the next slide, there's, there was a blended approach similar to what Kathy was saying. We have the in-school learning sessions, but we also have, well, not in-school, but the paper pencil, doing mathematics, which we've been doing over the years, in small groups, in classrooms, paper and pencils. And then we also have a supplemental, it's called Mathia. So it's a learning resource that has a very similar approach in the sense that students are able to move at their own pace, but I, I guess just the approach is more problem-solving, discussion-based. And when you look at the Mathia that is embedded in that program, it's building the skills you need to do that. And so, similar to what Kathy was mentioning before, is teachers are able to look at that dashboard and see how kids are moving through the program, they're able to stop and focus on some of the mathematics that's in there, but it also allows students to get the adequate practice they need, but also the extension they need. And, and a lot of the programs out there had the dual approach, but we found that this was really the most connected to what we were envisioning our math program to be. And so as we moved through this, we had a lot of conversations, that's the best part about reviewing curriculum, is you reestablish what your, what you want students to be able to have experiences with, what you want teachers to be focused in on. And this is actually reflections based on our conversations over the last couple of weeks. And so, in this Carnegie Learning Program, what you'll see is students are actively engaged in the building of understanding. Prior learning is used to spark conversations and connections. Students identify critical information and develop solution pathways. Math standards remain the same, but studied at a deeper level. Concepts and skills are connected across topics, reinforcing the reasonableness and usefulness of the math, and then students make sense of the math because the spiraling of the activities is explicit and intentional. So it's very well-written. I, I will say, we, we've been working with Carnegie as we went through the pilot. The companies that have these resources now really invest in building understanding of their resource, and not purely, and what I love about this company is, it wasn't purely to get us, like, hooked into the program, it was really, there's this commitment to mathematics and building the things that kids will need to be able to solve problems in any subject area, how they collaborate, how they piece together information that they think they need. It is less teacher-directed, but it's not unconnected to the teacher. So that's really exciting in the math world, is that these, the materials are actually coming alive, whereas in the past, we've had our standards, we've had resources, but it really didn't bring it to life. And so these pro, this program in particularly has really done that for us.
Should we go through the ELA, or do people have questions for Mary about that? I don't know how, how you want to approach it.
Are there any questions? I don't have any questions.
Okay, one. Yes, Chelsea? Thank you. When you're researching which program to go with, do you talk to other school districts about what they've used and the successes or challenges with each program?
Yes, so I guess backing up, any shift we made with these new materials was going to take some, some lesson study, it was also going to take understanding what the background of each of the materials were. A lot of the high-quality materials had the same kind of things threaded through. But I think that when we looked at this particular one, we were really just drawn to the fact that we were able to understand what it was asking, and to be able to build the expertise among teachers. And so we talked to districts, we have three or four that have been using it, but we had also talked to our presenters, who were putting us in touch with other people in other states as well.
And the only thing I would add to that is that, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education have been providing a tremendous amount of guidance to us as leaders in how we approach this process. And some of our coordinators have been participating in a network run by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on how you go through the process. That, in and of itself, becomes networking around what people are looking at and what, and then the leaders in the Department of Education, there is a math specialist, a science specialist, so we also use them as a resource. And finally, there are two different rating sort of organizations that we really look to. In, in math, there's really two major ones. One is through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and it's called Curate, and they use Massachusetts educators to look at resources that have already been rated well by a national organization and say, how does this fit in the Massachusetts context? So we look at the ratings there, and then Ed Reports, which is the national organization that does ratings as well, and we look at those ratings, and those provide very detailed, just, sort of breaks it into different components, and that's an important resource for us to, to make sure that we're looking at high-quality options.
Great.
And I would just add, because I know Megan is going to be presenting, just Curate is also for other curriculum resources.
Yeah.
So we now have access to much more research, evidence-based, vetted programs that we're selecting from. I will share that currently, the Big Ideas Program that we're using at the middle school level now, which will be adopted in two thousand thirteen or fourteen, is not rated as, was not rated by Curate or nationally as one of the high-quality programs. So this is a shift to better resources.
I do have a question, too. So, and I'm not sure if you can answer this, because there might not be enough data, but, so, and I haven't looked at the research in the last maybe five years or so, but there, you know, one, this is a question about girls' confidence in math. So when girls enter middle school, you tend to see a decrease in math confidence, it's all the steam around academic learning of math. Do you think that this particular program might address, and I, you know, I'm thinking about some of the elementary school, like, the buildup toward that, and the different approach in, in teaching could potentially impact that discrepancy in, in, in middle school, in, in middle CS?
So I'll start with ST math. And so what ST math we're finding is there are kids who did not typically really engage as well until, until ST math. So we're seeing kids flourish who weren't flourishing. And I'll, and also, the social component of math is really good for kids who need to know the why. And so sometimes, not always, they're girls. And so engaging with partners, with discussion, it, it, it creates the freedom to make mistakes and to share partial understanding, so that it, you're not just giving an answer, and the encouragement, and what, and that, the part about perspective-taking, is kids are starting to listen to each other and the pieces that they pick up on. And we're working on this year is really, how do we get kids to be collaborators? Because that does also take some, some time and development, so that they can fully grasp that component. And we think it'll, it'll meet the needs of girls and boys.
Excellent. All right, we'll move along the agenda to ELA in the interest of time.
Super. So there's a lot to share in English Language Arts, and most of what I will share will focus on the new Witten Wisdom curriculum that we received the professional development in yesterday. But I wanted to also spend some time highlighting the other work that's happening pre-K through eight. So over at Finn in the preschool, we've had continued use of the PELI Literacy Screener this year with the students who will be in kindergarten next year. And this year, we were able to hold data chat meetings after using that screener to have discussions about how that could impact what teachers did in the classroom with the Hegarty Phonemic Awareness, which is an instructional tool in year two in use in the preschool. Another highlight of pre-K is the implementation of the Focus Curriculum this year. And a more recent highlight is participating in PD series on emergent literacy that the pre-K team and I just started together last month, and will continue through this June, and then continue in the fall, to talk about those shifts that have been happening, to Greg's point earlier, in the science of reading, and what that looks like at the emergent literacy level. So in K through five, this was our first year using the Dibble's Literacy Screener all the way through fifth grade. Last year, we had it K to two, this year, we extended it through grade five. We also had data meetings at, at those screener, screener times to talk about students who might require some extra support and what that support looked like based on the data. The continued implementation of Hegarty Phonemic Awareness in K through first grade, and the continued implementation of Project Read Phonics in kindergarten through third grade. You may recall, we had sort of a refresh last year of those two, or of Project Read Phonics resources. So it's been exciting to hear reports from teachers using the Project Read Phonics and the Hegarty, how much, how confident they feel in year two of that refresh, and the growth that they've seen from the students in those areas as they've risen from one grade to the next, and what they've saw this fall compared to last fall. So that's been really pleasing information that people have shared. The big, the big news in K through five is the decision to move ahead with Witten Wisdom in the fall of this coming school year as our core ELA curricular resource. And Stephanie talked a little bit about the process that got us there, I'll refer back to that in a moment. But we're here at Trotter, and I want to make sure we highlight that at Trotter this year, they have continued using the Dibble Screener through eighth grade, and we've had lots of conversations on how we use that data to, to support students if they need a little extra boost. So, so on to Witten Wisdom, K to five. So we established a curriculum council with, through the guidance of the Department of Education Network Stephanie referred to earlier this fall, and it's, it's really important to acknowledge the amount of work that council members put into that process. Steve was on the council, and it was a tremendous amount of work. It was comprised of classroom teachers, ELD teachers, student support teachers, principals, and reading specialists, and Stephanie and I were on the council. And we went through the process of establishing our instructional vision as a district, recognizing the district parameters, and identifying the priorities for us as a district as we were, as we, before we started reviewing the highly-rated, high-quality instructional materials that are out there in the market landscape. Once we had established the vision, the parameters, the priorities, we had an evidence collection tool that was designed around our district priorities, and then we deeply investigated the finalist curricula, and we talked to other districts, we talked, we, we also did a couple of site visits, and then we did some consensus-building activities and came to, on the decision to move ahead with Witten Wisdom. So a lot of work went into it, to Mary's point, it's a very, it's a process, and, but we feel very confident about where we landed in that. So as the slide shows, the structure of Witten Wisdom is that it is designed to be used in addition to materials that I, that teach the foundational skills. So when we say foundational skills, that's really an umbrella term for those skills that are how we actually read words, decode the words, how we spell words, how we learn to handwrite, and how we learn to keyboard. So Witten Wisdom is not addressing those skills, but we have our already in place curricular materials that I referred to a few moments ago, the Hegarty Phonemic Awareness, the Project Read Phonics, and you'll see the little letter F up there, that's from the Live Letters, Letter Sound Curriculum that we use at the beginning of kindergarten. And then you see a few pictures of the Witten Wisdom components. So when you think about all the other elements of English Language Arts, text analysis, development of writing, writer's craft, vocabulary, thinking about breaking words apart and the meanings of those words, like Greek and Latin roots or suffixes, prefixes, all of those components, the vocabulary building, the grammar work, those are part of Witten Wisdom. So Witten Wisdom is designed to have four modules in each, in each grade level, and the modules are very high interest, so potentially you spend about two months on each module. Just a few samples here to, to demonstrate the level of interest that they generate. Third-grade modules, The Sea, Outer Space, A New Home, Artists Make Art, a couple of fourth-grade samples of modules, A Great Heart, which is both studying the circulatory system, but also what it means to figuratively to have a great heart, and that's what that module dives into over the, the two months. Another thing that really attracted the curriculum council members and other faculty members to Witten Wisdom was the many access points that it offered to content. So not only does it have lots of really rich, engaging, real trade books, you know, real books that you could check out at the library or buy at the bookstore, it also has photographs that are part of the lessons, it has real artwork that are part of the lessons, it has some video clips, some audio recordings. So it's really, it feels a very authentic, rich way to experience content. And I failed to mention that, it is a knowledge-building curriculum. So Greg mentioned the science of reading lately. One of the things that's out there in the science of reading buzz, I guess you could say, is this idea to build knowledge, so to develop literacy skills authentically through building knowledge. So you can see from the module topics, kids are studying different topics, but as they learn more about these topics, they are using the integrated skills of literacy, speaking, listening, reading and writing. So it feels like a really authentic way to embed literacy experiences into thematic, really high-interest learning, so. This is getting a little bit into the nitty-gritty of the design, but I think because we mentioned to you what we discussed yesterday at our PD, this is a lot of what we, we just covered yesterday in the PD sessions, is a little bit of the way that the curriculum is designed. So it is designed in a backwards design structure, meaning that with each module, the curriculum writers determined what they really wanted students to walk away from in terms of big ideas and really high-level thinking. And so they determine something called enduring understanding that they want students to walk away with, and then from that drafting an essential question. So not a yes/no question, but there are some samples up there, questions such as, how do people respond to the powerful force of the wind? How do stories help us understand immigrants' experiences? How do books change lives around the world? So not simple yes-or-no questions, but questions that really promote us to think, and then dive deeply into the resources that we have in front of us to, to get us closer to reaching that enduring understanding. You'll also see below the essential question, there are three focusing questions. So the curriculum has something called arcs, where within each overall module, you have some smaller arcs that dive, that sort of go into the essential question in a, in a smaller way. smaller way, so that over time they're building their understanding and it all sort of comes together through synthesis by the end of the module. The last, this is our last slide on the curriculum. Another, another component of the curriculum that really attracted the curriculum council members was the embedded windows and mirrors. So I, I've seen a lot of school committee meetings over, you know, in recent years and heard a lot of talk about the windows and mirrors work that's been happening. And the great minds, Witten Wisdom has just a beautiful collection of books representing, you know, some of the books are newer publications, some are, you know, older publications, but it really does offer windows and mirrors. And the writers of Witten Wisdom purposely designed their, their, their books and chose the books for this reason, to, to build the curriculum around the, the concept of windows and mirrors. And also it embeds a lot of SEL practices. So just like what Kathy was talking about, productive struggle, really working to promote empathy, a lot of self-reflection activities for students. So it really, it really seemed to be a curriculum that already had a lot of pieces that spoke to our district vision and work that's been in, in progress here for the last few years. So we are very enthused and yesterday across all seven elementary schools, we had seven great minds facilitators come to us from all over the country. They are either currently teaching Witten Wisdom or they have very recently been teaching Witten Wisdom in real schools. And so far, the buzz has been that all the facilitators were highly engaging, knowledgeable, organized, and it was just overall a successful day. And I think now, now the questions are starting and the to-do lists of, you know, the things that we want to get, get going on and to get ready to, to start this in the fall. But it's an exciting time. Well, that's my little intro to Witten Wisdom.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Throughout both of your, all three of your presentations, you brought up a good point, which is about professional development. And I think that clarify, I hope it clarifies for some who watch this or hear about this, like how necessary the PD days are and, and what's actually happening during that time, the act, how needy and contextual that is. So, so that's one of the things that I picked up from all of this. If you, if no, I have a question and then I'll see if any of the other committee members. It's kind of directed at Stephanie. So just where, as we roll out and implement these pop, these programs across math and English, ELA I should say, what are some of the factors that you're considering measuring? And how are you going to do that over the next, you know, near term? Maybe you only can, you know, know for this year, but you know.
I think those are great questions that we are talking about in the teaching and learning team. There is an element right now that, as you said, with the professional development of really learning the programs and letting everyone dive in to understanding all of the components and the assessments that are built into them. And so one of the things that we're talking about is what are our current assessments that remain, such as DIBELS? We have, you know, in math, we have some assessments that we use that remain and help us continue to measure individual and collective progress. But then also what comes with these new programs that may become new measures? And there's pieces of that we can anticipate and we're starting to look at. We have like kind of an assessment calendar at the elementary level that we use every year. And then there's pieces of that that I think we're going to have to live it a little bit to determine what are going to be some of the best measures. We do, you know, have some of our kind of standing measures that we'll continue to look at. We will have an ongoing group in, at both where we're adopting, and for all three of these, we have an ongoing group of teacher leaders who will be coming together to provide that feedback as we go to inform ongoing implementation. So a piece of the measurement is, there's a piece that's about student learning, there's also a piece that's about teacher experience and student experience and families' experiences. And we need some of these teacher leaders to help us kind of collect that data. So there'll probably be, whether it's surveys or whether it's using professional learning communities, I think that will be a piece of the measurement as well.
I think that'll be important, just to be able to say that, okay, fall 2023, program implemented, right? And now we look three years later, if you put that chart together, you'll have this kind of asterisk mark to say, aha, maybe this was the impetus for why we saw a change and whatever, so.
Absolutely. And I, the only thing I would add is that I think we also have to be patient.
True.
In the sense that there is a learning curve. And our last slide is about thanking our educators.
Yes.
Because our principals, our teachers, the ones who were involved in some of these decisions, but all of our teachers, it's a tremendous undertaking to add these new materials and resources and programs to their practice. And just the same way we have to allow for productive struggle and mistakes and a learning curve for our students, we need to allow that for our adults.
Yes.
And it is often, and we think of adoptions like this, if you talk to any of these companies, they will say three to five years to really integrate it, know it, and get the most out of it. And I think we have to allow that breathing room for our teachers as well. There is often a dip in MCAT scores when schools adopt new materials as we learn those. I have tremendous confidence in our educators and I know that's shared by others, that they're going to do great things with new resources. But I, I, that's kind of one of the balancing acts, I think we have to think about is measuring is important and we have to be realistic, but I agree that we want to be able to see our journey.
Yeah. The takeaway is that productive struggle, right? Being patient there.
Yeah. And our, and the teachers are, they're in it.
Yeah, that's what, what's not changed. We haven't changed in that equation, our educators. So educators are continuing to teach our students and we talk about providing them with good curriculum resources and materials. But they also bring a lot of expertise and knowledge to this work that will continue, regardless of what we choose, and also great professional judgment. So I think, to me, that is part of that equation, that is probably the most part of that equation, the important part. And then lastly, we have great kids who, who come to school for the most part with great enriching experiences as they enter our organization. So it's really a community effort.
Did you have something you want to say? Anyone else? All right, well, thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And sorry, I was just going to do one last thank you to these three phenomenal coordinators.
Yes, absolutely.
I said a thank you to all of our educators and school leaders, but really tremendous leadership, expertise, and so, so much work. A lot of time, a lot of time. So thank you all.
This really was fascinating. It really was.
Yeah, I would just echo that, you know, you know, in terms of amazing leaders, amazing work ethic, and very knowledgeable about specific content, has really helped us move. And, you know, prior to these roles, it would be up to Dr. Lionhorn Singlud to, to move this work forward. So we now have a teaching and learning team that we've kind of grown over the past couple years. And we have three members of that team, but there are also other members and they do amazing work. And if you can observe any, any, any meeting that's really exciting, other than the school committee meeting, come to a teaching and learning meeting on Thursday and see where all the conversations and discussions take place. But we are very fortunate, so thank you.
Thank you. Now you can sit up and run.
Steve, if you want to run, get down.
Yep, Steve, we only have one more thing, which is around subcommittee assignments. And I think that you can be excused from that.
Unless you really.
Appreciate it, thank you. What did I say?
Thank you.
All right, so as we move to the next topic of subcommittee and liaison assignments, if you look in your packets, we have listed what some of the standing and optional committees are today. And then we have study groups as well. Let's, we can have kind of an open discussion if, around any additions or changes that people, committee members want to make to the current standing committees. We'll start there. Yeah, yes, Roger.
Well, I think you, so I just want to, for the benefit of the new members, historically, I think we, the standing committees probably need to be filled. I think it's, you know, the district needs those between now and the end of the year. But also historically, the committee's taking a little time sometimes in determining which other liaison positions to fill. Gives people a chance to think about it. But I mean, that's just what we've done historically, I think.
I would like to suggest, so I'm on the, I mean, this, I guess this would be to bring up to you, I'm on the budget committee currently, and I'm thinking it might, that that might be a good committee for you. And I would be happy to go onto the policy development subcommittee. I don't feel strongly about either ones, I just think you have really good expertise. That'd be great.
So one of my recommendations would be that the only standing committee that we really need to make sure that we have a person assigned to this evening is the payroll and warrants. And then at the June meeting, if people have, want to just spend some time looking over this list and thinking about where their strengths are. Also, you know, Chelsea and Z, you might have some questions, like what does this subcommittee do or what does this liaison, what is, or we can answer some of those questions and then at the June meeting, we can make sure that every, every committee's assigned, but that's up to the group.
If you wanted me to, I, I would continue the payroll and, and other people can join in on that too, but at least to get through. So I'd be happy to do it if that's what you'd like.
So you sign the warrant every other week or?
Yes, yeah. So we, we send out our warrants, pay, both payroll and AP through DocuSign. And it's done every other week.
Okay.
And so we normally have two individuals who sign.
And do you look for specific things in that?
I, I mean.
Or is it more of a high-level review?
It, it's more of a high level. I mean, these are, these are huge. And by the way, if you were interested in that.
No, I'm just asking.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't have an objection whatsoever.
I'm just, I mean, I'm happy to be your backup if.
Well.
It sounds like it's something that needs to happen.
And it's not, it's not bad to have two school committee members sign it. I, I think Katara and I were doing that last year. So to have a second member is good.
And it can be signed, DocuSign, so you don't have to come in to do it.
Yeah.
Well, you would, but.
[laughing].
It's, it's a lot different than it used to be.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sure it is.
Who lives closest to the district thinks you're going to.
And I would just share that it's always a fresh set of eyes, looking at the payroll and AP is really helpful. Someone might take a look at, you know, the documents and see something.
Yeah.
We haven't noticed that, you know, we might want to think of it.
And it certainly could be, for example, Chelsea and someone else, okay. Whatever folks want to do.
Do you want to, so Roger is volunteer to do payroll, sub, standing committee? And Chelsea, you might have some interest. Do you want to, you know, would you be okay if we, Roger, listed you as the committee member for today? And then if in June?
Replace me if I fail. Okay. I'll get, I'll get over it.
So we need two, two people to sign. So Roger and then Chelsea was the second person. Katara was the second person, so.
I'm happy to do it if that works.
And then through the chair, if people, other people would like to take that on, it can be changed anytime.
Okay.
May I ask the process, if they have questions about any of the committees, are we going to do that in June or?
So what I was thinking of doing is sitting down with Chelsea and Z and maybe inviting one of you and we can actually talk about, or we can't.
You can't do it.
It would have to be one of.
I'll invite them in and we can go through all of the, any questions we have about these liaison assignments or responsibilities and give you kind of a high-level overview. And that way you can make an informed decision around committees, you think your strengths would help support. And then in June, we'll come and we'll decide and move forward.
Katara might be a good option to invite her.
That's a great idea.
Okay, yes, Roger.
Again, through the chair, so do you need, I, I'm, do you need policy done? That's, because there's no meeting scheduled before June, right?
Correct.
Okay, I just, so that could wait.
I have some strong feeling about that.
Great, great, NAREB building. Do you want some? We're going to get to it.
Okay. So, go ahead. Roger, Chelsea?
Yes.
You guys still talking, go, want to have some input on that payroll subcommittee?
I'm very happy to do it.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay. So we have two members that will be listed for that standing committee as of today. Anyone else that would like to join as an alternate? If one of you would like to step down, switch to something else, we can do that at a later date.
Great.
Okay, so.
Can I jump?
Yes.
Another question on subcommittees or liaisons? So I suspect that we will have, that there will be another NSPAC meeting this coming month. So Kamali, you had been on that, I sit in on that. I'd be happy to volunteer to be a liaison. We can have up to two, right? But you can't have a third. But I think you probably want to make sure we have somebody on that because there'll be a meeting this month, so.
Anyone feel strongly about joining that or taking over? So currently Roger and myself are, or I, I serve on the NSPAC committee and Roger joins as needed. I'm hap, I can continue or?
So I do feel strongly. I'd love to be one of, at least one of the people that are going forward on that.
Okay.
And there's certain room for another, obviously. But at least one person really should be there. I think it's very helpful for both the school committee, NSPAC folks, and also the district.
Yeah, I can, I can join this one, you know, the NSPAC one, right? As the.
Would you like to be a alternate or a full, you know, committee member?
So what we have now, you are already a full member.
Correct.
And Roger, you are the alternative?
One of us, either Kamali or I, would not be able, if, right? You can only have two school committee members on these committees.
Right.
You know, to not violate the overall meeting.
Right.
And so right now Roger and myself are volunteering to continue to, to stay as the full standing members.
Okay.
And there are many occasions where schedules work are not working out and we could use an alternate.
Sure. Sounds very suspicious, but yeah. Yeah, and I, I can, I can be the third person to fill in when needed.
So we have confirmation that we have, two of us at minimum will be able to attend and a third would, alternate would be Z. Good catch. Any other meetings before end of month that I can think of? Also in your, as you, as we, you know, we, as we all think about this throughout the next, throughout the next month, there's times where we realize like we can, in, you know, you see this middle column as inactive versus active, you know, we can reactivate something, deactivate something, or even introduce something new. All right. So I think we have the two major ones covered. We will add this as an agenda item for June. The next thing is old business, MSBA update.
Would you like me to jump in? I've got some, some background on this and also.
Can I just give a quick update? So April 26, the NAREB building committee met with the MSBA board. Over the past year, the NAREB building committee has been moving through the eligibility phase. The committee completed all the required documentation and tasks and at the April 26 meeting. completed all the required documentation and tasks, and at the April 26 meeting, the district was invited into the feasibility phase, which is the next phase that will require to complete in order to move this project forward, so Roger has some information about what that phase might look like in, in the Near rebuilding committee and a subcommittee that is formed as a result.
And some logistical issues too, but by the way, this, this will end up being my last volunteer, maybe forever, okay, but...
Yeah, right.
So, little history, just a tiny bit of history for the new committee members, the school committee actually had two representatives, and as things are progressing, and we, we decided last meeting was to reduce that to one representative, and the reason for it is as things progress, there are some skills that this committee really is going to need, especially in engineering, that, you know, that, that the committee, the building committee would like to go outside and actually bring in an at-large member, also, and they also would hope to be able to do it without having to grow the size of the committee, because as you grow committee sizes, it begins to get unwieldy, so that's really kind of where we are. Now, we are, we're, we're under a little bit of a clock here, because I think it's by next Thursday, we have to submit our request for services, right, to MSBA, and a number of things have to happen for us to get there. First, this committee is reappointed every year, so whoever would be on it needs to be not only put forth by this committee, but then that goes to the select board, and they then have to do the appointment, and, you know, that has to happen pretty quickly also. We then need to review that request for services, hopefully there's not a lot of changes, but at least we do need to review it, it's, it's, to some degree, a template, I guess, is that fair, but, but we could have some change, or the, the Near rebuilding committee could have some changes, so this is all going to happen over the next few days, so I, I guess I should say that I'm volunteering for the NBC, but it makes me sound like I'm trying out for a television network or something like that, and, yeah, then there's, then there has to be a meeting set up with, with the, with the new NBC, okay, to make sure we get that done before the, the services request has to go to MSBA, so, I'll put my hand up, I, I think, I think the reason that, I'm pretty sure I'm going to sell this, because I know there's a lot of other people that like to jump in, the reason that I think I hit the ground running on this is I've actually attended all of the, I wasn't a representative on the, on the, on the committee, but I've attended all of the meetings with MSBA, and so, that's it.
Can you tell us who else, you mentioned it, but who else is part of the Near rebuilding committee, or what other, not, not names, but representative of...
No, I mean, so the chair is Jason Milonowski, and...
One school committee member?
One school committee member.
Anyone from...
Ex officio.
Ex officio, the non-voting members.
Becky, myself.
Keith, Becky, Greg.
And me.
Steph.
And then principals.
Who's the, let's see, there's, see, I have never attended that meeting, but, but what about the, the woman that, she was on a school, she was on a school board?
Denise Eddy.
Denise Eddy, okay.
So there's a, there's expertise in certain areas that when the Near rebuilding committee was created, we called for, so Ma Davis, and I think to Roger's point, there were some areas that were still missing, so reduction of one school committee member will allow...
Does Andrew Fafson on that also, from advisory? I think so, okay.
Because Katara was part of this, and so we discussed reducing to one, so that would allow someone with construction, planning, et cetera, experience to be able to join? Okay, I ask all of that because I know that, you know, as people were discussing the things that they want to be involved with, as, as committee members, this was one of the areas, so how could another one of us be a part, ex officio, of these discussions, where we just channel our thoughts, comments through potentially Roger?
These are public, right, and are many of them, most?
I would say probably the, I mean, the committee is essential in terms of moving this project forward, that this is a standing agenda item on our school committee agenda, I would say that the eligibility phase was very light, there weren't a lot of updates, and people were doing a lot of work behind the scenes. We are now entering the feasibility phase, where each month, most likely Becky and Keith will be providing an update on progress and where we're at, so the committee is informed around how this is moving forward, so I would say that's the primary vehicle, I think the meetings are also open meetings, you can attend if you're interested, but most of the updates will be, I would imagine, at this table at these meetings.
And so that would provide an opportunity to kind of provide input, influence, et cetera, and you're right, we went, we did a feasibility study before, what's, I don't, that's two years ago, for another effort, and those updates were almost monthly or every two months, so. All right, do you, does everyone, anyone agree, everyone agree or have any objection to Roger's volunteering to be part of the Near rebuilding committee? I, I'm all for it.
I think it's great, I was the other member, I could attend virtually no meetings, because they always conflicted with things, so I think it would be great to have someone who's able to attend, and who, and I would say, no offense to the new members, but who's been, because it's complicated, there's a lot going on, so that might be perhaps like a second year thing for newer committee members.
You bring up a good point, it won't be done in 12 months.
That's for sure.
Yeah.
Just want to, we, we just need to make sure we, we meet the, you know, the requirements as we go along, to make sure that we don't, you know, miss something along the way.
Okay, we're, I, I'm not going to take a vote on that, I just ask for consensus, okay, sounds, we don't have any objection.
So what we need to do, and I, if, again, through the chair, what we need to do here is we need a letter, and would the district help put that letter together?
Yeah.
So we need a letter from the school committee identifying who the representative is, and that has to be then submitted to the select board, so I think that's probably a letter that you would...
Collaborate, I would submit it to...
Yeah, that you would send, Kamali.
So I'll draft something, Kamali, and send it for your review and any edits.
Okay, then I'll mark it all out and correct it in, no problem.
Well, if, since it's me we're talking about, I want to make sure that it's, it's actually a very good letter, so please.
I'll make a good pitch for you, for you to join, absolutely. Okay, superintendent's report to the committee.
So in your packet is the enrollment report as April 18, 2023, and as Chelsea had indicated, we are seeing some shifts in grade level sections and numbers, and as a result, teachers are shifting, so we are working through those plans and those communications as we speak. The grade level that we are monitoring very closely is kindergarten, right now, we have 106 students enrolled, which is less than we typically would see at this time of year, however, there's great variability in kindergarten enrollment, and that can change in a matter of weeks, it also can change quickly in the summer months, so we feel comfortable keeping the seven sections of kindergarten, and the worst-case scenario is that we have really small kindergarten class sizes, which I think is to the advantage of those kindergartners and teachers, if that remains the case. So also in your packet is the FY '23 monthly general fund expenditure report and grants update involving fund accounts, and I'll turn it over to Becky.
So good evening, over the past month, the finance team has been reviewing the South Borough FY '23 budget, and we have made some adjustments to some of the encumbrances that we had, so you will notice that there is a little bit more money on the bottom line as compared to the April report, or the April school committee report, so as of April 30th, we had a balance of $157,699, or 0.71% of the FY '23 budget remaining. We're trending very close to where we were last year at this time, for fiscal year '22, we had $167,324, so we're really following right in line with where we were at this point in time. The final two months of the fiscal year are an especially busy time for the finance department, we're closing out this fiscal year, and we're already started to prepare for FY '24 as well. This past Friday marked the last date that schools were able to enter purchase orders in for FY '23, of course, if there are emergencies, we will work with them on that, but we are really trying to limit the amount of purchases that are happening, so that we can close the year out very smoothly. Corian Bardley, who is the South Borough financial coordinator, joined us at the beginning of this school year, so this is going to be her first time doing a fiscal year close in a school environment, and she's been working great, she's been working with our schools and with our departments to close out any open purchase orders, collect invoices, and make sure that things are paid and closed, so we really are at a good point right now in the, in the year. And Kamali, I don't know if you want to do a vote for the...
Yeah. Can I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
Those purchase orders, we're doing, we're closing them out for the teaching cycle of the school year, but does she also handle the POs for what's happening in the summer with our extended day program?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Same person, okay.
We have two girls, the school year '23 and the school year '24.
I never know what year I'm in.
Okay, so at this time, I would accept a motion that we approve the FY '23 monthly general fund expenditure report?
Until audited.
Until audited. So moved by Jen?
Second.
Second by Roger.
Can I ask a question before?
Yes.
Who?
Any discussion?
Who audits?
Yes.
It goes through the town, the town audit.
Okay, and then they come back to you?
Yes, we're very close with Carla on the audit.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call vote, Roger?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Zee?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Hi.
All in favor, and Kamali, myself, yes, so that has been approved.
Okay, now, great.
So grants update, please.
So really, with the SRS, I, there is not much movement from the previous month, so the SR2 fund balance has not changed at all, we currently have $1,564 remaining, and those funds, we are anticipating purchasing an ELD kindergarten curriculum using those funds, so they are spoken for, and we do have until September 30th of this year to fully expend those funds, so we're prepared to close that out once we are able to make that purchase. In terms of the SR3, again, we did not make any expenditures during the month of, of April, we still have $210,610 remaining on that grant, and we do intend to utilize those funds as part of the fiscal year '24, some of the curriculum initiatives that you saw tonight are going to be purchased utilizing these funds, and we have until September 30th of 2024 to fully expend our SR3 money.
I have a question.
Yes.
For the purchases that are going to be made related to the programs you've heard about tonight, do we anticipate any, like, shipping issues, and, I mean, a lot of it is electronic, but, you know, these textbooks and...
The only shipping issue is where are we going to put?
That is correct, yeah, no, we don't, one thing that is helpful is because the, the major, so, one thing that is helpful on the ELA is that because we are using the grant funds and we are using FY '23 money, we are ordering now, which is ahead of the cycle of when most schools order, because most schools order on July 1.
Okay.
So that is helpful, and, and those POs are actually partly in and going in, and in terms of the middle school math, the company's been incredibly responsive, and we actually have a lot of the materials in the hands of teachers from the pilot process, and they are, they told me yesterday that they will ship the teacher editions now, even though we don't pay until July 1. So they're very, they're just great partners, and then we don't anticipate any delay in those shipping either.
And just a quick note, from the last meeting, the committee accepted the $104,000 grant, so it was accelerated literacy learning through a high-quality instructional materials grant, that totaled $104,000, that is, we have been used to adopt the way in this.
And paid for the PD, so the PD that I mentioned, so yesterday, there was PD for Carnegie Learning in math, and for all of the Witten Wisdom, Carnegie Learning has a second PD on June 1st, Witten Wisdom, all the teachers have a second PD happening at various times throughout June, and then we also have PD for the leaders around, we had one already around strategic planning, and another one coming around leading the work, and all of those are funded by the grant, and therefore have to happen before June 30th.
Any funds out of this going towards the introduction of language at the earlier stages?
The South Borough, well, language program?
Yeah.
No, I mean, that, there, we are working on that?
Yeah, yeah, but...
And, and meeting, but these particular funds is...
So we had, we had the grade four and five, language and cultural exploration, so we're using that position, and we're shifting that to K1 next year, and we don't anticipate any costs in terms of materials.
I think, I guess I'm still a little have that, like, what is that, PTSD around, you know, us ordering things, and I'm not getting here on time, so...
Yes.
That's the question, all right. Anything else on the SR funds? I think it's just amazing to see, right, this threads back to the first part of the meeting where we talked about $30 and $60 per child, right, and here it is that we've got, you know, we're down to, we had SR1, 2, and 3, and spent them wholly down, right, on all of this for the students, so it's just, yeah, it's all threads together. The next thing that we have on the agenda is, yes, Roger, was I supposed to say?
I'd like to, I just want to make sure of one thing, on the subcommittee assignments, do study groups need to be appointed also? Okay, so as it exists, I'm the liaison to the solar feasibility study group, and by the way, I, not that I don't love Keith, there is a meeting coming up, and if someone, you know, I could unvolunteer if someone wanted to sit in on it, that they were interested in this, I am actually interested in it, so if someone, but if someone was interested in it, they should, I guess, let Keith know, but as it stands, I'm planning to attend, and we don't really need to appoint that, okay, I just wanted to double check that, sorry.
All right, so yes, around educational policy, I've seen no update at this time, and, oh, yes, we're still on the reports committee on revolving fund accounts.
Yes, so just, so we heard about ST math this evening, and Kathy was, did write a grant to purchase ST math for our district for, how many years?
Three.
Three years, so, again, having the capacity and expertise and the people power to write these grants has really... has really paid dividends. So I'd like to thank Kathy for taking the initiative, but it's a value of forty thousand dollars. And again, money that we don't have to expend out of our operational budget. We just need a motion to approve.
Yep. I'll accept a motion to approve the S T math school grants, forty thousand dollars for, uh, forty thousand dollars, yes.
So move.
Second.
Okay, so moved by Roger, seconded by Jen. Let's take a vote.
Can I ask?
Any discussion? Yeah.
Do you need anything more specific than that as far as what it's used for? Or is this, is that, and that works?
I specifically left it open so that it could be.
Could move it along.
So roll call vote, Roger?
Yes.
Kamali, yes. Jen?
Yes.
Yes.
Zee and Chelsea?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. Any more discussion around that?
And I think we just, I think Becky has to finish revolving fund accounts.
Correct. Wasn't sure if you wanted to skip over.
He was eager, so I, you know.
So the revolving fund accounts that we really highlight are our facility rental revolving account, and then also the South Borough Extended Day Program that the district operates. As you can see with the facility rental, again, there really was not much of a change in that account from last month, as of April thirtieth. We did, we have received just over seventy-seven thousand dollars. And for the newer committee members, the projects that have been paid from this account this year include the paving lot project at Finn. We've also done landscaping work here at Trotter Year. We've done some roof replacement work here at Trotter Year, as well as an upgrade to the elevator to meet state inspection and code requirements. So those were what those expenses that you'll see. This summer, we do intend to utilize some of those funds for the paving project here at Trotter Year as well. In terms of the South Borough Extended Day Program, you can see year-to-date, we have collected seven hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars, and our expenses have been five hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars. We continue to trend with where we had projected that we would be going, and we are also finalizing the S E D P FY twenty-four budget. We are gearing up for the summer program, Kamali, and we are assisting with that programming and thinking about some of the purchases that need to be made for that program this summer.
That's a good question about that. The hundred and seventy-eight thousand, so what happens to that? Does that go into the summer programming? Does potentially for, you know, expanding the extended day to have more teachers or more instructions, or do we just keep it in a?
So the, what we had talked about from the beginning is making sure that we have three months of reserve in that account at all time, you know, having learned from, from COVID. We think that's a safe practice to have in place. And then we would be looking at, we have been working with, Keith and I have been working with Carrie Packard to identify some of those purchases. Maybe that did not happen this year while we got the program up and running. That may be appropriate for next year. We're looking at staffing levels based on demand as well and having those conversations. Anything you want to add?
No, I wouldn't. It's, it's great to get to this point in the year where we really have a good feel of what the projections are, well, what they have been. We have a year under our belt and then forecasting ahead. You know, it does look very promising for next year. Enrollment is where we would want it to be, which is great, both for the summer and for next year. So that coupled with Becky's work of developing a budget, reviewing that with Carrie, really getting down to the detail, we will then have the opportunity to look towards, you know, different opportunities, whether it be staffing, equipment, things of that nature, to make sure we're providing good experience.
I think, too, it's also allowed the committee to have no increase in rates to.
That's true.
The consumers, which I think is, in this day and age.
Welcome.
Probably one of the very few, you know, programs that is holding steady in terms of cost.
Keith, to piggyback on Jen's question, I don't know. This may be premature, but cost for licensing changes, or maybe not so much cost, but the time needed for any licensing changes, okay.
No, we're in good shape. You know, Desi does provide, offer us, you know, guidance, and we've provided that and gotten the approvals necessary. So we don't have the licensing types of demands that were on the prior S E D P with their E E C qualifications that need to be updated, I think, yearly. Yeah, so we don't have those types of audits.
Any questions, Chelsea?
Yes, so just to piggyback on that, you're, you're specifically referring to being able to extend S E D P to pre-K?
That, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure I followed what you were asking.
Two, two things, like, one, just to have the license to operate, period. And so that's, that's what Keith was answering there, which is, it's, it's a different model than previously. But then that second portion, which is on the extension to the younger grades. You want to talk about that, or?
Well, not this time.
Yeah, I just wanted to try.
No.
Yeah, I think it's a very, it's a different organization licenses.
Okay.
Pre-K.
Yeah.
And as an organization, we, we would not be able to do that, nor was S E D, S E D P able to have a pre-K program. So it's not even really an option for us to explore.
Okay. And my, my real question, though, was around the facility rental expenses. When you're looking at capital items to be paid out of that revolving account, is it something that you're picking off of your long-term capital plan? And so you just look to see kind of what could fit in from that? Is that kind of the process that you go through?
It is.
Yeah, and this year, I think we looked at our capital plan because we were involved in the town's procurement of, or for paving services.
Yeah.
And so we actually accelerated the Trotter Year project because the, the proposal, the price proposal came in much lower than what we were receiving.
Yeah.
When we had gone out to the market to get some estimates. So, but that was on our capital plan, I think, for next year.
The only thing I would add is that all capital projects that the school committee approves also gets approved by the town's capital planning committee. They don't need to, but it's just a natural error of check and balance.
Okay.
So anything that we move forward is approved through the town's capital plan, but also on our capital plan out here.
And it's regardless of the funding source.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Roger?
Just a quick question. So you said that you're trying to keep three months reserved, and I guess that means three months of expenses? Is that kind of what that means? So if I take, how many months are we in, ten, through this?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So then we'd be averaging fifty-six thousand a month?
Yeah, that's about where.
That's about right.
And we would need to have at least a hundred and seventy, okay. Thank you.
Anything else revolving accounts, what I said right there? Okay. Educational policy, I see that we don't have an update at this time. Has anything changed? So will policy development and distribution? There's no changes or updates at this time. So the next item on the agenda is the personnel items. So looking at the personnel report, yes, Roger?
Can I, I'll just, I'll just update you. The combined policy, subcommittee met, but those won't be, and I think there'll be a couple moved forward, but those won't be put forward until the next combined meeting.
Okay.
But, you know, the attempt was to have consistency is, you know, of the policies throughout the three districts.
Okay, makes sense. So at our next meeting with all three districts, that's when we would hear the update of policies that were edited or added or changed.
The ones that came back for the second reading would be, you know, presented to be approved.
The personnel report?
So a pretty uneventful personnel report. We do have one retirement, and at the June meeting, we'll also invite all of the retirees to join us so that we can acknowledge their years of service and thank them for all that they've done for us and wish them well in their, their next phase of life.
Yeah. We don't have an update or change for communications. So we'll move on to taking action on the minutes. So in the packet, we had two, two open, two meeting minutes summaries. So one for the open meeting minutes of April twelfth, twenty twenty-three. I would accept the motion that we accept the minutes as written.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's take a roll call vote. Roger?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Jen?
Yes.
Zee?
Yes.
And Chelsea?
Same.
The second meeting minutes packet is from the executive session. Do we want to take a motion on that, or?
So I would move that we approve the executive session minutes of April twelfth, twenty twenty-three. The South Borough Committee to vote and retain them.
Okay.
Or to retain them, to approve and retain them, I guess I should say.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
Kamali, yes. Jen?
Yes.
Zee?
Yes.
And Chelsea?
Same.
So thank you for your thoughts on that. So moving on to approval of bills and payroll. No update there, or is there an update there? No?
No.
Okay. So let's talk about, a little bit about agenda items for next month. From our discussion tonight, any items that we want to add? So, so far, some pre-thought was given to recognition of the retirees. And then also the South Borough before and after school program. We would have an update from them. Anything else that we talked about tonight? The subcommittees, selection. Roger, or Zee, or Chelsea? Nothing.
So I think I have a process question, maybe? I don't have anything to add tonight, but what has historically been your process if a committee member wants to add something to the next agenda? And who do you go to, and when is the agenda kind of like set?
So sometimes we think of that agenda item right now during this portion of the meeting. But we have between now and, I think, two weeks before the next meeting to provide that input to the chair.
Okay.
And I would see C, Greg, and likely Cheryl, as she helps with updating that.
Okay.
So any comments on that?
Well, just a, so the superintendent's going to review with the chair the proposed agenda, sometimes what, a week and a half or so?
At least a week and a half.
At least a week and a half before the meeting. And then the chair certainly has a right to send out, I guess, I guess, a draft. A draft agendas so that people have a chance to then add, or, or people can just add, right? They can just, you know, through the chair, they, they need to, they need to let the chair know. I mean, it's not a great idea to, since, since these agendas, it's not a great idea to do it really at the last minute because.
We're usually getting input from various members.
And, and they're trying to balance sometimes, at the end of the year is the end of the year, but they're trying to balance sometimes mid-year the length of these meetings. So there may be, if it looks like it's going to get too long, something could get moved to a following month if it's not, if it's not time-sensitive.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
But I think it's helpful for, for Cheryl, who helps organize all of the agendas, is that if, if anyone has an agenda topic, email the chair. And then when, when, pass, when I've sat down and went over the agenda on that Monday, for example, to weaken our fire, we have all the topics, and then we can, as Roger indicated, look at the flow of the meeting and make sure there's not too much or not enough. And Kamali gets to join that work.
Yeah, sometimes. Okay, so at this point in the meeting, we open it up for public comment. So if there's anyone that's out in the audience that has a comment they want to make, they can make a comment or ask a question. Otherwise, we can take it up another time. Anyone have a question or a comment? Okay, we have someone that has a question or a comment. That's a great question. So our audience member, Emma, has asked, when does the meeting end? And at this point, I will call this meeting to closure at eight fifty-six.
I think you even want to vote to adjourn.
Oh, yes, we're going to vote.
Can I just make two, two quick public comments?
Okay.
Almost there.
So, almost there. Sorry, sorry, Emma. So tomorrow night is NSPAC Go the Distance Award. So at six o'clock at the high school. So if you have a chance to attend that event, it's, it's a wonderful event. So six o'clock, Algonquin Regional High School in the cafeteria. And just show up. It's an amazing event. And then Friday night is International Night, that also Algonquin Regional High School in the cafeteria from six to eight. And that is another event where you can just stop, stop by and, um, RotoWeb and Her Department and Coalition for Equity is sponsoring that event. There'll be food and singing and dancing and learning about cultures around the world. So two events if you have nothing to do tomorrow night, Friday night. Highly, highly recommend that you attempt.
We'll just go as a private citizen, right?
Yes.
We didn't, we didn't tell anyone, right? Okay, let's check it.
So, great, thank you for adding those last two points and, and reminders. And I recommend that if you can make it, please make it. Anything else, Roger?
Even if you have something else to do, you should do one of those instead.
I would accept a motion to adjourn, and, yeah.
So move.
Okay. Seconded by Zee. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Kamali, yes.
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 Chelsea?
Yes.
So this meeting is called to end at eight fifty-eight P M.